Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Pots Grove School Board meeting. Just to kind of let everyone know ahead of time, we have a little bit of spotty connectivity this evening. If it were to drop at any point in time and there would be public comment, like hopefully it doesn't happen during that, just stay tuned. We're going to do our best to get back with you. We think we have more stability with the coverage at this point. So, all that said, we're going to call the meeting to order and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
And for the role tonight, everyone is here. And we are moving on to our first public comment. This is with regard to any agenda item. And we do have Mr. Einhorn. And Mr. Einhorn, you know the whole opening drill there. Thank you.
Let's try, let's try that again. Good evening. My name is William Einhorn. I'm a district, district employee. I just wanted to comment specifically on action item, action item seven point three, the high school, middle school portable wireless microphone system. I just really just want to say thank you in advance to the board for the, for your consideration. This, this is really going to go a long way in helping our already fantastic productions just go, go even better. And these, these are really just a necessity. So, thank you to everybody that has been involved for doing that. I know that the five students I have with me have actually are all part of our productions in some way or another. So, and I know that it's just gonna, it's, it's just a good thing for our districts. I just, in advance, I want to say thank you for your consideration to that. And if you'd like me to stay up here for the next item, since I'm up here. I do read the agendas sometimes, so.
Thank you, Mr. Einhorn. So, we'll move right on into three point one.
So, I'd like to invite my five, five students that are here tonight up with me. Here tonight are five of our tremendous orchestra students who way back on November, Friday, November the fifth, performed with the Montgomery High School Honors Orchestra. This is an orchestra made up of about eighty to ninety students every year, getting together from many districts across Montgomery, Montgomery County. They get to perform under a guest conductor. This year, they performed under Maestro Joseph Brennan, who was the director of orchestras for Havre, for the Havreford School District, for the middle, their middle and high school for over thirty years. It's a fantastic concert. These students, it's, it's, the concert really is a culmination of months, many months of practice, many months of having to leave school to go to, in this, this year, in this case, Upper Dublin High School, which is quite, quite a commute from, from us since we are in this, this corner of the world. We did actually host this festival in twenty nineteen and I believe in a few years, we will be hosting it again, which, which will be good for us. But I just, you know, I wanted to say thank you, especially to Dr. Jeffrey Smith, our principal, for helping to get them this recognition. These are five of really the finest examples of Pots Grove students. Not only are they involved in the orchestra program, but they're involved in the band program, they're involved in the choir program. Some of them came back from rehearsal only to go to marching band rehearsal right, right afterwards. So, they, you know, a lot of them burned the candle at both ends for their work and, but they're just a fantastic group of students. So, I wanted to invite them, come on up and I would let them talk, introduce themselves, the instrument that they play and, you know, their favorite moment from the festival.
Hi, my name is Emily Gomez. I'm in eleventh grade and one of my favorite things about Montgomery County Honor String Orchestra was the professional environment that we were in and how we really only had very few rehearsals and we were able to pull together an amazing concert in such a short amount of time.
Hi, I'm Ivanya Hatley. I'm also in eleventh grade and I play the violin. And one of my favorite things about Montgomery County Honor String Orchestra as somebody who's been doing it, this was my third year this year, is that like it's refreshing to be challenged in that way. And it's, it's, I'm grateful for the opportunity because there's not really a lot of things to do with my violin at Pots Grove because I also play the trumpet and I'm in marching band and jazz band and concert band and all the things. And it's nice to have that opportunity for the violin as well, since there aren't as many options, so.
My name is Natalie Shovleton. I'm a tenth grader here at Pots Grove and I play the cello. And this was my first year doing Montco String Orchestra. And I was really excited to meet Dr. Joseph Brennan and get the opportunity to see another conductor's style of teaching, the music and of, you know, just a different conducting style in general. And one of my favorite things that he did that I thought brought a little bit of humor into rehearsal was he had this little like eye of Sauron that he would hold up whenever we weren't paying attention or a little like light and we would have to count how many times he held it up while we were doing our warmups. And I thought that was just a really interesting way to kind of keep our focus and keep the rehearsal light.
I'm Evelyn Engelmann. I'm in eleventh grade and I play the violin. I think my favorite part is just the experience and seeing how all, everybody's at different levels, but still can all play together.
Hello, I'm Liam Lappick. I'm a senior. Some of you may know my, my dad. It was a really cool experience to play. This is technically my third year, but the other two, I had to stop because I was concussed, but it was really nice to like play this year at like a different level of music than we had before, than I'm used to, I guess, because it's kind of nice to just join in together with all these other people from all these other schools, most of which haven't even heard of us, and just like talk to them and get to play music with like new people. It's fun.
I actually, I actually told Liam and his dad, he wasn't allowed to play sports this fall for that, for that reason. Yeah, yeah. But in all seriousness, yes, and in some cases, they get to play with some of the same people year after year as well. So, it's just a tremendous experience and as Ivanya said, it's one of the rare opportunities we have outside of Pots Grove for these, for these types of festivals. Not to give a quick shameless plug, but I'm going to. We are actually hosting PMEA District eleven String Fest at the end of February this year. So, these students will be involved with helping, with helping with that. They, they were very happy to get out of a day of school, excuse day of school, I might add, to help out with that festival. But we have over, we have a little over two hundred fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders coming to this district at the middle school. So, we're excited to be hosted. We hosted this festival in twenty eighteen, so we're kind of pros at this stuff by now. So, I invite, I invite all of you out to, to this festival and just want to again, say thank you to the board, to Dr. Finerty and everybody for their, for their support of this music program. Thank you to these amazing students and to all of our music students for their continued hard work and, and goodwill towards our districts. Thank you so much.
this evening to come and share with us. All right, we're moving on to four point one, the January Student Report.
Okay, well, I'm on my own, so I'm just gonna save both of these reports. So, hope you all had, well, this, okay, I'm gonna, before I say this, this report was written like for two weeks ago, so some of the stuff isn't as current because I kind of forgot to update it. So, I was gonna go off what I have here, but I'll add some stuff into. So, hello, everyone. I hope you all had a good break and were able to spend some time with your families over the holidays. What? Oh, sorry. My report is going to cover some of the events that we had going on right before break as well as some things that we're looking forward to in the coming weeks. The week before break, StuCo held a spirit week in which students seemed to, that students seemed to enjoy. And as I walked the hallways, many people were participating in many different ways. This week, we also have a spirit week before Color Day, so like today was pajama day, tomorrow's tie dye, and then Friday, Thursday is country versus country club. StuCo also had a door decorating contest and as always, it was a big hit with many teachers and students working together to decorate the doors and make the hallways more festive. I will say, this year, people went crazy on the door decorating contest. Like before, it was like, okay, it was fun, it was like, whatever. No, these people have gotten so competitive, like it is crazy, but it was so fun. Like, I loved hearing like everyone's like, was like going out with each other and they were like, oh no, my, my door is this and like, it was, it was so fun to like, I didn't decorate a door, but I was a super, I was supervising. So, I was too busy to decorate one, but I was supervising and it was really cool. So, okay, earlier in December, NHS had a candygram sale and it went very well and many students participated in them and enjoyed buying them and having them be delivered to whoever that they chose. The winter fest that we do every year was also a huge success and we saw like one of our biggest turnouts that we've ever had. Many families, our community, brought their children to enjoy the activities, so it was definitely a success. The middle school, excuse me, elementary school and high school winter concerts also finished up. Like I said, this was kind of old, but, and they were all incredible, it was always playing some fantastic music. Ringing Rocks had their holiday sing-along, which I was at. Dr. Finerty, I saw you there. And the turnout was incredible, there were so many people there, but it was like super cool to see and like the kids really enjoyed it. It was so nice to see all the students, their families getting into the holiday spirit. I'll shift my attention to our upcoming events. So, in the few weeks, well, not in a few weeks anymore, last week, we had midterms. Stop. Last week, we had midterms, which most people don't enjoy. Mine weren't that bad. I only had one midterm to take, so I kind of enjoyed my days off. Plus, we had snow days, like it really wasn't that bad. And then what comes after that is like the most exciting on Friday is Color Day and we're gonna beat the juniors and everybody else. And because I think Dewadi would like this, on behalf of the seniors, let's go back-to-back. That's all for me and I'm gonna read the rest of this other report. So, okay, so mid, mm, okay, so she basically said that midterms coming up, students are owning, honing into their skills and knowledge that they've acquired so far during the school year in order to prepare for midterms, which have an impact on our grades. Although the midterm preparations may bring stress and cause people to procrastinate, our Color Day directly follows midterms, which allows students to be excited for their midterms to be accomplished. Color Day preparations have begun between all four classes, including decoration, design of shirts and banners to display each class's theme and/or colors. Also, on Friday, January fifth, there was a coffee house right here in our cafeteria, which featured Pots Grove musicians, singers, poets, jugglers, and more. The event was great for students to, who are afraid to have a big crowd, but have been dying to showcase their hidden talents. So, I got like, I saw videos from it. I think I was busy that night, but I, I wanted to go so bad, but I was busy. But the videos, every, every year, I think it gets so better and better, like the performances these, like our students put on are just incredible and like a lot of them, like Cecilia said, don't feel comfortable doing it in front of a big crowd, but in front of their peers, like they just, people are so talented in this school. I think it's just so cool. And that also raises money for the immunology field trip that they take to, on the, Wallops Island, yeah, Wallops Island. So, which is like, it's just a good cause in general. So, to wrap up the report, I hope you all had an amazing family-filled holiday break and good luck in the new year.
Student Council. Yeah. Thank you, Emily. We always appreciate your reports out. Moving on to five point one, report of the superintendent.
Thank you. Just one, one item tonight. School Director Recognition Month. So, January twenty twenty-four is School Director Recognition Month. On behalf of our entire district, I'd like to thank each of you for your service and for your commitment to improving student outcomes. And remind everyone, board members are unpaid volunteers and put in many hours to help the Pots Grove community continue to be the best place to teach and learn. Our elementary students have shared a few small tokens of their appreciation and at this time, if you would be so kind, I'd like to invite Ms. Sabolski up to kind of take a picture of you, maybe sharing some of those. Whatever, whatever works for you.
And as we're sharing all of that, we realize we don't have our microphones on, so it's not able to be recorded, but this is, this is just awesome. All of these, we have so many. And the kids took the time to do this and it's just such a beautiful gesture. Also a beautiful gesture, the coffee that I needed, that's for sure. This is cute too, because it's active. Love it. I know, right? Thank you, students. We appreciate it more than we can say. Thank you. We're here to serve you. So, this is, again, just a beautiful gesture. Thank you. We are ready to move on to Action Items Personnel. Action Item number six.
Are you ready, Tina? Yes. Okay, I'd like to make a motion. We approve six one through six five.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all action items six point one through six point five. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All pass. Moving on to Action Items Business, seven.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve seven point one with an explanation.
Okay, would you like to?
Yep. So, action item seven point one is replacement of our walkie-talkie system. So, the walkie-talkie systems are governed by the FCC and the FCC, the Federal Communications, what's the last C? Commission, has made a change in the acceptable equipment. Our equipment is no longer allowed to be used in schools, so we have to, it can't be serviced, so we have to make a change. So, we will be, this is to approve new equipment and this is to approve our selected vendor that we discussed in our facilities and operations meeting.
Are there any questions with regard to the action item? Dr. Nipper, did you have a question?
No, I just wanted to point out that this, as, as Dr. Finerty had mentioned, had been discussed at the operations committee meeting and so this comes forth with the backing of that, of the committee.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to seven point two, finance and HR information system.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve seven point two with an explanation, please.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Go ahead, Dr. Finerty.
Yes, so this is our finance and HR information system. Currently, our organization, our organization uses five separate programs to manage HR functions, some tech functions, and also our business functions. They do, these, these programs do not communicate with one another, making it difficult for our, our staff to function efficiently. Information has to be hand-entered into multiple systems, which is an opportunity for, for error. It also limits what we can do. We are a, an organization with four hundred and sixty people in our organization. Having software that allows us act, to act efficiently is very important. We also generally run lean. So, again, efficiency is important. So, what you see in this proposal today, or this quote, is a, a system that is similarly priced to the collection of systems we have, but there is a significant cost to implement the system and that is going to be amortized over four years. So, this is going to be roughly an annual subscription of ninety thousand dollars, but then with the amortized cost over the first four years, it's going to be a hundred and forty thousand dollars, which is about forty-five thousand dollars more than what we're currently paying. But this system will provide increased functionality and will allow our systems to talk one another. It will put everything under the, in the cloud and under higher security levels than what we're at right now as well. Any other questions on that?
Okay, any other questions or comments? Right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to seven point three.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve seven point three with an explanation.
So, motion and a second. Go ahead, Dr. Finerty, thanks.
Seven point three is for the high school and middle school portable wireless microphone system. This board, in full board and also a committee, for the past almost a year, we've been talking about improving our audio systems in our auditoriums. This, it has been a, a long process. We've had four vendors come in and recommend a phased implementation of improvements. I want to thank Mr. Bitler for leading the charge on this. He has been the one that's kind of walked through with the, with our music teachers hand-in-hand, kind of identifying what our needs are to make sure that we're providing a, a good environment for our students to perform and also for the other uses of our auditoriums. As I mentioned in my blog, audio equipment is expensive. So, what this proposal looks like is this is actually a portable system that can be used to support our high school players, our high school musicians, and also our, our middle school.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to say that I'm really happy this is finally happening because the, the systems they had in place, I mean, way back when my daughter was in the musicals in middle school, were just, you know, you could hear two, maybe three of the, you know, the leads and then that was that. And the acoustics weren't great and, you know, there was just a lot of issues and it was a shame because those kids really put their heart and soul into it, just as they all, you know, they all do for every performance. So, anyway, I'm just really happy this is finally happening and the kids really deserve it.
And I just wanted to say, last year, we had a tragedy in, in our plays, but this year, this is a great investment for our students and all the hard work. But this year, this is a great investment for our students and all the hard work they put into it. So I'm a hundred percent for this.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Moving on to action items education.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve eight point one along with eight point two.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve eight point one and eight point two. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion's pass. Moving to eight point three.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve eight point three with an explanation.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Thank you.
Eight point three is the health and safety plan. The health and safety plan is a artifact from our years with managing the COVID pandemic. By law, we still need to, to have this plan approved through September of twenty twenty four. And it must be approved at least every six months. So this is our second last time that we'll be voting on it. There are no changes. There is no mask mandate in place.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to eight point four.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve eight point four through eight point six.
Thanks. We have a motion and a second to approve eight point four through eight point six. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving to eight point seven.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve eight point seven.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve eight point seven, the student and staff calendars for the upcoming school year. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving to eight point eight.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve eight point eight.
We have a motion and a second to approve eight point eight. Are there any questions or comments?
Just a comment. I really want to commend Dr. Finity for moving on this. I think at the end of the day, the core purpose of an educational system is to drive educational excellence. And to accept the fact that good enough is not good enough tomorrow and that you need continuous improvement. And to see the district do this, especially with our goal one point one, to drive educational achievement. For me, it begins to put a plan in place where we can not just let it happen, but begin to make it happen with that kind of educational improvement. So again, I, I commend you for taking action in this and for beginning a plan to move us in that direction.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to committee items number nine. Nine point one, operations facilities report.
Yeah, the oper, the operations committee met and actually our principal efforts were resulted in two motions tonight. One, the, both are related to wireless mics, but they're very different types. One, the replacement of the micro, wireless mics used by the security and the others for the wireless mics for our plays. So those were the, the discussion of the last meeting. And I guess you're happy with the report because you approved them.
Thank you very much, Dr. Nipper. And yes, I would say we were pleased with that, with that action. Moving on to nine point two, the CIT report.
Good evening, everyone. You all have made my job relatively easy this evening because most of what we talked about at CIT, you've already taken action on. However, I will review for you exactly what we did at the CIT meeting. We met on January sixteenth. We had several items, again, that you've already acted on this evening. Those included the Potts Grove Middle School as well as the High School Program of Studies. Of note there, particularly at the high school, there were relatively minor changes at the, on the middle school program of studies. The high school did have some revisions to the program of studies, relatively minor as well. Those included two art courses. Those art courses are a combination of existing art courses that we have, including graphic arts, photography, and animation, and creating a digital arts course one and a digital arts two progression for students in that particular area. A second one was guitar two. We already have guitar one in place, so this is just a, a next step for our students who are experiencing that. We also added or made a revision to what used to be called Music Uncharted. Now it will be called Modern Band. Really just providing students with multiple opportunities, again, similar to what we did in art, making it relatively a little more universal for students to, to learn about music there. We're adding general psychology. That's really to complement AP, our Advanced Placement Psychology, that we've had in place for a good number of years at this point, and it's pretty popular. We anticipate that being a relatively popular course. And then racket games. So you've all heard of the, how pickleball has taken the nation by storm. But racket sports in general, it's another elective for our students within physical education. None of those require additional staff and the costs are relatively low. It's simply some time or for curriculum writing for our teachers to kind of work on the sequence of what instruction looks like in those courses. We also talked about the health and safety plan. You've already voted on that, and we've talked about that many, many times over the years. And I'm glad not to talk about it a whole lot anymore. You also already took, took action on the school calendar, but we did talk about that. Mr. Bitler talked about a couple of things related to technology, one of them being technology recycling. So for our equipment that is out of service or no longer current. He talked about several different ways that we could either sell or dispose of that equipment. We talked about the pros and cons of each of those. And the committee really provided direction to Mr. Bitler to make it first available to community members and then selling to others outside of the community after that point in time. He also talked about the regional wide area network and really about a process for updating the fiber connectivity. That was an informational item. And then talking about walkie talkies you already talked about, and I think Dr. Finity provided an update on that. At our February meeting, we will be doing, to, to tap into both what Dr. Finity, as well as Mr. Strunk, just talked about, really talking about goal one point one. So each of our buildings will be reporting out on the goal that each building has been doing related to those, to that goal. And we'll also have some additional presentations from Dr. Lucas, really talking about what service delivery can look like in special education. Something we've had in place, at least at a pilot level, is co-teaching, and we're exploring, expanding that model further as well. So she'll talk a little bit about that at the February meeting as well. Mr. Laber, did I miss anything? Sure. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to the report of the Athletics Co-Curricular Community Relations Committee.
I'd like to ask Steve and Danielle to come join us.
From our Athletic Hall of Fame, the board meeting. Busy night here, like usual, at the high school. So we had our meeting last Tuesday. The first part started with community relations, and Dr. Finity led the majority of that meeting regarding community engagement. We invited leadership from a number of our parent volunteer groups to discuss ways to build a stronger Potts Grove. Throughout the meeting, a few takeaways were developed that we discussed after regarding, there's more, more volunteers are needed for all of our parent-run organizations or booster clubs. There are many volunteer opportunities for our students, so we ask, you know, we ask a lot, but especially, you know, even at this meeting, please consider volunteering with any of our parent groups at, at all of our building levels because there is a great need and there continues to be a great need year after year to do all the things we can do here for, for our students. Another takeaway was publish a social events calendar that we can post through social media, also on, on our website. We're going to try to, we're going to coordinate with all our, our parent-run groups to market our events so our community is better informed of what is going on and how to participate and/or volunteer at those organizations at all of our buildings. We're looking at hosting a volunteer fair at one of our high-impact events that we have throughout the school year. An example would be at a football game. We are doing a Harlem Wizards game to help the Education Foundation in the coming, when is it, March? March twentieth, so thinking about hosting a, allowing our parent-run organizations to put a couple tables to give their information out and solicit volunteers as well. And the last piece was to provide an annual recognition of parent volunteers who have made substantial contributions to supporting student opportunities. So four takeaways we took from that. We had, like I said, a variety of representatives from our, our volunteer groups, and they were the takeaways throughout that meeting.
Thank you. I would just like to add that if parents and people in our community are looking for opportunities to volunteer, yesterday, Dr. Finity put out a blog that you can find on our website. I posted about it on social media. All parents received a text and an email as well. And in his blog, he details some of the parent groups that are available to our community members, if you're interested. And thank you to some of the leaders of the organizations that joined us virtually for our meeting to discuss this topic, our PTAs. We have representatives from the Booster Club, Potts Grove Village, Music League. So thank you for that. I updated our committee on the Potts Grove Education Foundation teacher mini-grant selections. At this point, everyone has been notified whether, you know, they were selected or not selected at this time. So I'd like to say congratulations to Mrs. Amy McMahon, the Middle School Physical Education Department, the High School Physical Education Department, Mrs. Jessica Pierce, Miss Ellie Zarifus, Mrs. Kristen Rambo, Miss Tiffany Hanson, Mrs. Logan Pateen, and Miss Mary Cromwell. Just an example of some of the things that we were able to fund this year. Heart rate monitors, some new pickleball equipment, which sounds like it'll go nicely with the new course at the high school. Some instruments for our music classes, some new photography equipment for the photography classes, and so on. So we had twenty-four applications this year, which was double from last year. So that was great to see. And also, Steve mentioned the Harlem Wizards are coming on March twentieth. Tickets go on sale tomorrow. So start to expect some communication on that. The Education Foundation is hosting it. I updated the committee on my brand-new alumni spotlight series that I'm trying to implement this year. I've already completed one with Chloe Claus. Back in October, I met with Chloe. She's class of two thousand and fifteen. Chloe, she illustrated and authored her own children's book, which is really impressive. So she came in and I interviewed her. And she also spoke to a small, select group of students who are interested in potentially pursuing a career such as that. So that was really nice to see the students be able to interact with an alum who really wasn't that much older than they are now. Our next spotlight is taking place next Wednesday. Brianna Beitler, I apologize if, that's not how you say your last name. Brianna is coming in. She is a performer, and I'll be speaking to her and interviewing her about that. And she will be speaking to a select group of students who are interested in pursuing the performing arts post-Potts Grove. And lastly, I gave an update on the district's social media accounts. As always, we've had a lot of high engagement. Some of the best posts that we've had this past month include the Potts Grove versus Pottstown basketball game. All of our winter music concerts performed really well. Our community loved seeing those pictures and the video from that. Our PBIS assemblies continue to do well on social media. We had girls swimming, breaking records, and, and a lot more. So as always, I will continue to, to share the, the great achievements of the students on our social media accounts.
And the last piece, the athletic piece, was Mrs. Graham asked to give me a report on our Market Street fund balance. So I was able to give a re, snapshot, snapshot of what it looked like since our partnership regarding net and gross revenue with Market Street Sports. I also provided the committee with a spreadsheet indicating how much money we had left in our account. All money is deposited into the general fund with that account, so we were talking about ways to earmark that money potentially in, in a different manner. But we have roughly about twenty-eight thousand dollars left in that account after we spent some of that money on our facility upgrades in the fitness center and speaker systems out on, in the stadium and in the turf field. So we talked about what are, what are ways in which we can spend that money, or what is a process and procedure of how we go about it? And in years past, that discussion always started at the Athletics Co-Curricular and Community Relations meeting. So we talked about getting back to that way of having a conversation of if there's needs for any variety of our organizations in the district, conversation there, which would turn into an action item if we think that money that is available in the account to spend it and then bringing it to the board for an action item. So we decided that we're going to continue to go back to that regarding spending money or accessing money from Market Street. And I believe that concludes our report. Anybody have any questions?
Cannot thank you guys enough. Thank you. Thank you. We're at new business, ten point one. Dr. Finity.
Thank you. I, I did want to just, a couple of shout-outs. I want to thank our parent volunteers that showed up to the Athletics Co-Curricular and Community Relations meeting, and also our parent volunteers that, that show up day in, day out. Over the past couple of years, we've tried to bring more and more students here to showcase their talents. And virtually every single one of those groups is supported by parent volunteers. Parent volunteers are very important to what we do here, and we are very grateful for the parents that give of their time. And if, if any parents out there can find even a little bit of time, it would be very much appreciated. And I suspect you'll, you'll feel gratified and rewarded by investing your time. So thank you. So Ms. Grimm just asked me to talk a little bit about clearances. There, there are clearances when you're working with students, and that's something that, should you be interested in, in volunteering, please reach out to either the groups, and there are links in, in my latest blog, or you can call or, or email me directly, and we'll get you set up. So thank you.
Nothing for me. Thanks.
I know that Friday's coming upon us, and it's the best day of the year. It's Color Day. So all I gotta say is seniors, go easy on the freshmen, okay? Try your best.
I say I agree now, but we shall see in like the next board meeting if I still agree, if it's the best day or the worst day. But, yeah, that's the goal.
Have fun and make memories.
Also, win. Mr. Onzbach back there, you know, he, use your Color Day shout-out, Mr. Onzbach.
Okay. It's my turn. Tell us how school's going, Emily.
I had midterms, which like weren't that bad, but I'm speaking at Color Day, which I thought I was ready to do. I've said this speech about thirteen thousand times, and every time I do it, it sounds like, I feel like, I don't know, I just like, I'm getting, it's just crazy. Like I, I've been planning my Color Day speech like in my head for like four years, and now that I'm writing it, I'm like, wow, this is kind of hard. Like they make it look so easy. And like, I like to talk, but like, I don't know if I can do that in front of ev- But I don't know like how, well, it's, it's like, I, I'll be fine once I get up there, but like, I think the suspense is just like killing me because I've had it written for so long. And now that I'm practicing it, it's just like, that's like, it's really happening on Friday. But then after that, you know, after I get the speech over with, like, it'll be fine. And Color Day will be great, and I'll be joyous when I go home because we're going to win. So it doesn't really matter, but anything else. So that's like really it. And then, yeah, like I said, midterms, like they weren't that bad. People didn't like them. And nobody really likes them, but I mean, the snow days did help a little bit in there, kind of took, you know, some of the week off. But mine weren't, yeah, mine weren't bad. I feel like teachers were very like under- I feel like teachers were very like understanding, especially with like missing the, because like some electives had that Tuesday, we were supposed to take midterms and stuff, and they were like pretty good about just like extending them or like giving us like to do it in the library, which like, it's like threw a wrench in the plan, but like, most teachers, like, they were just fine with it, and like with the extensions and stuff, so like, it wasn't super, it wasn't, they weren't that bad. And I think they were actually like more well-run this year, people actually like came to the midterms and weren't like, oh, I'm just gonna come make it up or whatever, like, people, like when I came in on Wednesday, there were like people who actually were like here, like taking, the hallways were busy and everyone was here taking their midterms, and I was like, I felt like it was a very good like year for midterms, like people, like last year, I feel like people came on the makeup day, but this year, like everyone was, seemed like they were like there. But, yeah, so that's like basically it, and then it's just like the last, like, oh yeah, I ordered my cap and gown, which was like kind of crazy, and I paid for my senior class trip, and it's like, oh gosh, okay, Emily, figure out your life, and it's like, that's a little scary, but it's okay, we'll make it through, so, anyway, that's like it.
Thank you so much, and you know what, you're going to do great with the speech at Color Day. So a little anecdotal, in college, I did a public speaking class because I, I get panic attacks, I'd like, I sit here and it happens. And I passed out cold in, in that class. I don't think your dad was in that class, because obviously we went to college together. But he probably wasn't. Right, and so, and I wish I had that. Yeah, but you know, it's funny because of my, my very dearest friend has always told me, if you speak from the heart, you're, you know, anything you say is fine. And there are so many times that I'll be like panicking, even just sitting here, and I'm like, I just speak from the heart, okay, that's easy. And so you're going to do a great job with Color Day.
Thank you, I took, I took public speaking last year, which like, I think is going to help, but like, at the same time, it's like, that was in front of like seven people in a class, and like people that I know, like my, and they were all my grade, just so happened to be all be in my grade. But like now, it's like, it's like also one of the things where it's like a message that I have to get across, if I don't, then it's like, it's just a lot of pressure, but I think I'll be fine. I like to give speeches that are meaningful, and like, I just tend to be very good with like my words and like formulating good like thoughts, so hopefully it comes across the way that I wrote it and the intent that I wrote it with, but we shall see.
Yeah, and really, like, I- Yeah, and at the end of the day, like worst-case scenario, you don't pass out cold in the class like I did. Absolutely. Exactly, yeah. And that was the nineties, so nobody did all of that. They stepped over you, you were good to go, walk it off, it's all good. So again, just speaking from the heart, and you're going to do a great job, thank you. And then I wanted to thank everybody, I wanted to thank all the students for the cards that they made for us, and the coffee was critical, especially for me tonight. I appreciate that. And the food, the food was a good point.
They often say that school board is an unpaid job, and I don't think that's true, and I just pulled this one card out. Dear school board members, thank you for helping Potts Grove be the best, I appreciate it. Some Kid Named Bryce. This is, this is something that's in many respects, I still have packs of these from all the years I've been on board. And this is something that is more meaningful in many ways than the so, the nominal salary township supervisors get and so on. So I think we kind of deceive ourselves when we say we are unpaid, because this is in many ways a real salary. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, Dr. Nipfert. It's absolutely true, truly. It's, this is about a service, and it's all about the kids. And, and thank you for the time that you all took to make all of these beautiful things for us. We appreciate it so much. Before we take a motion to adjourn, we have a brief executive session that we have to meet for. And we do have public comment as well. I didn't want to forget that announcement about the executive session immediately after this meeting. So we're going to move on to public comment, eleven point one. Is there anyone here that wishes to make a comment? Anyone online? Oh, thank you. Okay, now we can do that adjournment thing. Motion to adjourn? Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed?